Okay. I would like to call to order the board meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District for Tuesday, 30th, 2011. I apologize for our late start. We will begin with the pledge.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and just. We are looking for justice for all.
Okay. I believe, oh, we have our interpreter here. If you would like to introduce yourself, thank you.
Muy buenas noches. Mi nombre es Vivian Rodriguez, y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del Distrito Escolar Unificado de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias. Thank you.
Gracias. Thank you. And we also, I'd also like to note that we have hearing assistive devices for, as noted on our screen, for anyone who needs such device. Do we have any introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions tonight, Dr. Cash?
No, we do not.
Okay. How about our superintendent's report then?
Well, it will be very brief since we just met last week. Reporting our day three, which we had final of our enrollment, was 15,213 students. And tomorrow is a big day in California because the California Department of Education releases the Academic Performance Index and our school's performance on adequate yearly progress pursuant to No Child Left Behind. And Tom Torleksen, our state superintendent of public instruction, will hold his press conference at 11:45 a.m. to announce the statewide results. And that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you. We look forward to hearing those scores. Board comments and/or correspondence? Anything to report from the board? Not at this time. Okay. Thank you. Announcement of closed session action. We have no action to report out this evening. Are there any public comments? No public comments. Okay. That brings us to our consent agenda. I don't know if anybody else caught the inconsistency in the minutes, so I'd like to pull D1.
We do have a revised, I'm sorry. I'm not sure if this is what you caught, but there is a revision on C3 from June 14th.
The one that I caught was on page two of six of June 14th. It says that the motion was made by Board Member Parker, and then it also says that Parker was absent.
Yeah. That's the correction, I think.
Oh, that is, I'm sorry. Is that not what I'm seeing? Oh, okay. Okay. I apologize. I misread that. I misread the correction. Okay. Are there any other items we need to pull then? Ms. Parker?
I'd like to pull D10.
D10. Okay. If there are no others, do we have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero, and we will return to item D10 at the end of this agenda. So we get to our action agenda, actually a little early, even though we started late. Item E1, approval, yeah, we like this, don't we? Approval to cancel the November 29th, 2011 regularly scheduled board meeting due to the Thanksgiving holiday.
So move.
I'll second that.
Not surprising we don't have a lot of discussion on that one. Okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. Item E2, approval of classified job description for coordinator student community relations. Ms. Alvarado, would you like to present this to us?
Thank you. I'm here to present an edited, updated version of our coordinator student community relations. We felt that after reinstating these positions from the layoff and rescinding their notices, the high school principals met and got together and looked at the job description and made some recommendations, which you see before you, that are bolded. We just wanted to bring that up to date and current with their duties assigned in this position. Also, we've revised funding sources for this position so that they will no longer be categorically funded. And we've worked that with the high schools and with Dr. Cash involved in that discussion as well. So you have the job description before you. We did invite the principals. We are a little early. Mr. Behrens is here in case there are questions. Well, unfortunately, I think I gave him a 7:05 or 7:10 schedule. But if you had any questions, certainly, since the principal's worked on this so closely, he would be more than happy to answer any of those, or myself as well.
Well, in defense of the other principals, we've certainly trained them not to expect us to be early.
Everybody has to understand we're under Dr. Cash's time.
Okay. It's Dr. Cash's time.
Okay. Ms. Parker?
I do have just a couple of questions on it. Well, first of all, and I'm not sure if this is a question for, who this is a question for, let's find out.
Okay.
I understood that this was a position that was active at Dos Pueblos. Is that correct? Or was it active at all three high schools?
Actually, the position has been active at Dos Pueblos and San Marcos High School. It has been an ongoing position at La Cuesta.
Okay.
It is not, and hasn't been a position, or we haven't had an incumbent in this position at Santa Barbara High for a number of years.
Okay. So with this, and with the revisions to it, all four high schools will have it?
Correct. Correct.
Then I guess my next question is the funding. It says the sites will forego a 1.0 FTE-certificated position to provide funding. Is that for, starting in 11-12?
No, that'll be rolled out over time. Because it came so late, we're going to decrease their allocation over a three-year period in order to actually fully fund all four positions.
Well, I guess I like that because, of course, the hope is that there's a turnaround before then because I know the master schedules are so tight that the idea of, you know, losing six, five sections in order to fund something like this would be hard. So, okay, that's good. Thank you.
That explanation came after my report, so I was glad that Dr. Cash gave me that update on that. I also wanted to note that we do have a vacancy in this position. At La Cuesta, we've recruited, and we are going out again for another recruitment. And we will then, after tonight, open up the position at Santa Barbara High. We do have incumbents in place at San Marcos and at Dos Pueblos.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Behrens?
The fiscal impact is $150,000. Can you describe how that spreads across the four?
Well, it was for, actually, three positions because the current one was already in place, the one at La Cuesta. So it included the salary at eight hours a day, 10 months per year, and included the fringe costs as well as the health and welfare costs. So that was the combined. It actually came to about 140, 140, I rounded it to 150,000.
And for the positions, for the positions that have incumbents, have they already started?
Oh, yes. Yes. They were rescinded their notices, and they're in place at Dos Pueblos and San Marcos.
Ms. Deacon?
Thank you. And I'm really glad we did this because I know that these are really important jobs. So I'm glad we're being able to provide them, not just to a few schools, but to all of them. When I first looked at this, I thought the listing of duties seemed a little bit thin, and I wasn't sure if that's because over time we will evolve and list more responsibilities. I guess I'm used to seeing job descriptions that have significantly more responsibilities called out.
Well, I'd like to address that. One of the great things that came about as a result of getting the three principals, the comprehensive high school principals in the room at the same time to discuss this, was how they wanted a standard job description, but then they wanted to be able to fine-tune it to what unique needs they may have, which may change year to year as far as their particular communities. And I thought, I really respected, I actually remember Ed very clearly saying, "It's really important to me." I don't remember the specific job duty, but he said, "It's really important for me that this person also does this." And that may not have been a significant thing for Ms. Carey at Dos Pueblos High School. So there was an agreement on some core functions, and that's what you see before you. And then they all wanted the opportunity to have a little flexibility from year to year, essentially.
Okay. And I'm assuming employees at individual sites would know what those more specific responsibilities would be. So, good. You know, the only other thing that jumped out at me, and I, this is more just kind of a semantics, linguistic thing, but we're using the word minority here, and these are not our minority, this is not the minority students. I mean, majority of our students are Latino. So, you know, as I read it, I thought we could potentially just drop that word.
That's a great idea.
That's a great, yeah. No problem.
That tells you how old this job description is.
Right. Right. Okay.
I was going to make comment that this is actually one of our oldest job descriptions that we've had in place. And this did not go through a reclassification or review back in 1997. So it'll give you an idea of how long it's been around. It hasn't been utilized at all of the schools, as you will note, at a number of schools for off and on. And again, it depended on the funding, if it was available. So it is a very dated job description, and we're glad to update it and certainly make that adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That was going to be one of my comments, too. I had one comment and then one quick question. Oh, thank you. The question I have is, given that this is not in place at Santa Barbara High School right now, and we've been operating without it, and as we're rolling it out, I'm assuming it probably won't be put into place until maybe sometime mid-year or probably next year?
This year.
This year, okay.
He's really interested. In fact, I talked to Mr. Vecchio today about it.
Oh, great. Okay. Because my question was going to be, how are these duties being handled at Santa Barbara High School, absent this position?
For not.
They're not being handled. Okay. Because these seem very significant duties. And in fact, that was going to be my comment, is I, too, when I first looked at the job description, thought it looked rather sparse. But then when I looked at what they were, I thought, for example, just under support school attendance policy, visits homes to check on reasons for students' absence, that could take a lot of time. And attend school meetings and may record minutes, depending on what the meetings are, that could also take a great deal of time. And then there were a number of others, composing and translating. Those are very time-intensive activities. So even though it seems like the list is somewhat short as compared to some of the other things, some of the other job descriptions that we usually see, it sounds like quite a heavy load in terms of how much time it takes. So, you know, I'm kind of happy to see that we haven't gone overboard as we often do. I think sometimes we write job descriptions that really are impossible for any one person to actually accomplish. So I was happy to see that this seemed kind of doable, and also the items that are included, such as attending ELAC and DELAC, I think that's really good. Okay. Any further discussion from the board? No. So this will come back to us? Or, no, I'm sorry, this is on our action.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the classified job description for coordinator student community relations as revised.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Madam President?
Yes.
May I excuse Mr. Behrens? As a high school principal, he leaves out almost every night, and I'm sure he'd like to get home, if he can, to his family this evening. So I want to thank him for coming.
Yes. Mr. Behrens, you are excused. And we appreciate your attending for.
I really appreciate the support for this position, too. I think it says a lot about the importance of where Mr. Cash is directing importance to the Latino community. So it says a lot. Thank you.
Here, here. I think we echo your sentiment. Thank you very much. Okay. Item E3, notice of public hearing and approval of resolution 11/12-13 regarding sufficiency of instructional materials for year-round elementary.
This is a time certain, so.
Oh, okay. So we need to come back to this one, then?
Yes.
We will postpone, we will kind of adjure, or, I don't know, postpone that item and move on to item F1. And I wasn't looking at my agenda, so, sorry. Item F1, discussion on creation of the Sustainability Council, or a Sustainability Council. And Mr. Hetjung, I believe you will enlighten us on this item?
Both Dave and I will.
Okay. Thank you.
Dave, take the lead, and I'll follow up.
You don't want to go first?
Sure. I'd be happy to go first. One of the things that is very part of the public dialogue is ensuring that public agencies such as a school district have as much in terms of sustainability practices and policies and procedures in place. And it goes, the more typical way to look at it is typically in materials and facilities, which would be part of a Sustainability Council, the kind of purchases we'd make, how we interface with our vendors in relationship to the work they do on our facilities. But I also think it would be, an important part of this would include an educational component, and how students in our school district understand the importance of sustainability, how it impacts their lives, and how, what they can and can't do about it. I think it's a great idea. We have come forward with some ideas about it, some potential committee members, and we're eager to listen to your questions and take your advice. Dave, do you want to add anything?
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Cash. 10 years ago, with the passage of the Healthy Schools Act of 10,000, or 11 years ago, was when the district set up the first item on this list, integrated pest management procedures to reduce the pesticides in schools. That's also about the time that I arrived in Santa Barbara, early 2000, when I started working here. And I've seen steadily this community become more green year after year after year. Originally, with integrated pest management, the city actually took the lead in that. They have some really fine, educated people that were on that, leading that charge. And now we have Santos Escobar from the city, who's about the most knowledgeable person I know locally, along with Phil Boyce, as far as integrated pest management practices and procedures. We've also started to be very green with our direction to our architects on designing buildings for energy-efficient systems, natural light, things like that, of highlights for other types of things. Right now, we have a proposal out with PMSM Architects to do a photovoltaic study at San Marcos High School. And we're also looking at preheating our pools with solar, along with some benefits or incentives from the gas company. So we keep moving this direction, and this is basically the next logical step. I think every high school has a green club, or some type of club, with members that are making sure that their schools are doing the right thing as far as turning off lights, recycling. So there is a lot of student involvement with being green. And our purchasing department has made a lot of options available to our custodial staff for green products, and is constantly letting them know, you know, these alternatives are available, and they're no more cost, and they're more of a green-type product. A lot of our principals have taken the lead in this. Let me just name two that have taken an outstanding lead. Well, we know that Peabody Charter under Kate Ford was that way, but for the people that are under your direction, Sally Kingston at Harding, one of the leaders in being green, along with David Ortiz in the secondary district, they have stepped forward and led that charge.
Thank you. Board members? Ms. Deacon, does she have a comment?
Well, I'd like to thank Dr. Cash and Mr. Hetjung for putting this on the agenda because this is something that's really important to me. And I know that we're already doing many of these things, but I really like the idea of pulling in community stakeholders, representatives from the schools, to help further the initiatives and also to promote and publicize what we're doing because I think a lot of people don't know some of the great work that we're doing. And so that's really important as well. And I really like the curricular piece. I did talk to Cynthia White today, and she may not like this, but I might want to volunteer her for a member as well because she's been attending the Green Technology conferences. And in fact, there's one coming up in October that I might try to go to if I can down in Pasadena. But they have whole modules on how you integrate what you're doing in terms of sustainable practices into science curriculum. And we know that you can have kiosks and lobbies that monitor the kilowatt-hours that your solar is bringing in. Students can calculate savings, heating swimming pools in their math classes. I mean, there's so much that can be done. And with the new framework for core, the standards in science, I think there's going to be a lot of that process-oriented going on. And so I think it's a natural, and I would love to, these people that are listed on here are really interested in participating. And I know we've got great student initiatives, like the water filling stations, where primarily initially a student project. And so the recycling caps and gowns, I've seen that going on at college campuses. What a great way to save money, maybe fundraise. There's a lot of things that could be done. So I'm really excited, and I would volunteer to participate in this if we need a board member.
And I need to echo what you said about Dr. White. Every time she goes to the conference, I get a good deal of material that she forwards to me and sends to me, some of which I've received from other organizations. But a lot of it is fairly new and up to date. And so you're correct, she'd be a great addition. And don't tell her I said that. I'm cheering her.
Just one question. The Wellness, I don't think the Wellness Committee is a Brown Act committee. This is not designed to be a Brown Act committee, correct?
No, it'd be a superintendent's.
Thank you.
Ms. Parker? I'll just chime in that I think it's a great idea, and I hope that we're going to move forward on it very quickly. And because it's not a board committee, we would never take a vote on creating it. You would simply move forward with it, correct, Dr. Cash?
Absolutely. Just looking for advice.
And also for anybody that you think would be an appropriate member to serve on the committee that's not on the current list, we'd be happy to consider that.
Well, that was actually going to be my comment, which was, did you consider possibly adding a student? As you mentioned, there are the green clubs on every campus. A high school student, I think, might be a really positive addition.
Great idea.
Yeah, perhaps from each of the schools.
Yeah. I think they'd all, we'd probably find one from each high school that would insist on participating.
Great. Ms. Lamone?
And I just want to echo, I think it's a really good idea. And on the student piece, I was just reading an article where Duke University actually incorporated students into a process like this and got ideas that they never imagined they would get. And so I think it'd be great to incorporate some of our students at the high schools as well.
Yeah, I fully agree. Because at the schools, for things like recycling, the students are the ones that are leading that charge. It's easy for the principal to say, "We're going to do this," but you have to have a club or some student leaders that are actively promoting that to actually make it work.
So I think what you're hearing from us is we appreciate the work that both of you have put into this, and we are all for it.
Great.
We hope that it happens sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Item F2, the first reading of revisions to board policy and Exhibit 1312.3 Uniform Complaint Procedures. Dr. Mills?
Good evening. What you have before you is a proposed revision to board policy in Exhibit 1312.3 Uniform Complaint Procedures. And this was part of the FICMAT Action Plan. I've cited the section, FICMAT number 77, that talked about retaliation. We had a small subgroup meet, and the proposal was to add the language from ED Code 56046. Specifically, it involves the prohibition of a staff member, typically, I would think, an administrator, intimidating, threatening, coercing, or attempting to intimidate, threaten, or coerce a staff member, basically for advocating for a student, a special education student to receive services. So this is in a proposed amendment that would address that issue.
Ms. Behrens?
I think you sort of emphasized staff member. If I read it correctly, it's intimidating anybody, including parents, a private individual. Would that be?
Well, if I can join in, that was going to be my, well, that was going to be part of my question. When I was reading the underlined portion, it specifically applies to staff. But then as I read down, where the second paragraph from the bottom on page two of three, where it says, "The board prohibits any form of retaliation against any complainant in the complaint process," I assumed that that would apply to parents, or guardians, or anyone advocating on behalf of the student. But I was going to ask the same question to double-check that that, in fact, was a correct reading.
I would certainly think that it would apply to anyone because the Uniform Complaint Procedure would certainly apply to anyone.
Because where it says, you know, it would not, it would not in any way affect the status, grades, or work assignment, I would assume grades would mean it applies to students.
May I ask just what page you're on of?
I'm on page two of three.
Of?
Of.
It may be different online than it is in the, in the book because?
Oh, I'm sorry. Of the BP 1312.
I think that in the, there's an original version that doesn't have the revision. Okay. So it's the second one. So you're in the second, two of three?
And I'm on the second paragraph from the bottom, above the legal reference.
Yeah.
And actually, the last one, probably, too, to some extent. But, so I just, I think I share Mr. Behrens' concern about parents being included, and just want to make sure that that paragraph does apply to parents.
And my question is for you on that because the addition is the underlined section that switches from one to three, which makes it clear that it's any person. It says, "An employee shall not directly or indirectly essentially retaliate," but it's against any person, including, but not limited to, a teacher, provider, a private individual. So it's all sort of included in that paragraph? And I almost feel like that it becomes sort of redundant down below, but I don't know that it needs to go away, but.
I just want to make sure that I interpreted that one correctly.
Absolutely. And that's exactly what it says as well.
Yeah. Because, I'm sorry to belabor this point, but because it specifically lists, although it does say "not limited to," but it specifically lists a teacher, a provider of designated instruction and services, a paraprofessional, instructional aide, a behavioral aide, it definitely implies, I think, that it's specifically talking about employees. Because that list goes on. And it says that, you know, "For the purpose of interfering with the action of that person at any time to assist a parent or guardian." So it sounds like we're not, it's not talking about the parent or guardian. So that's why I just wanted to echo Mr. Behrens' concern that, but as I said, when I was reading it, I understood that later paragraph to include parents.
So I guess that we're left asking, does the term "any complainant," is that broad enough to include everyone?
For me, it is, yes.
Okay. Because if we started listing parents, then we'd have to start listing all kinds of other individuals.
Exactly. So I think maybe we just want to have it reflected in the minutes that our intent is to include parents, et cetera, in that, in that language.
Sure.
So that, should there ever be a question, the minutes would reflect that.
I have a technical question.
Sure. Ms. Behrens?
And I'm perfectly willing to waive the second. And I'm perfectly willing to waive the second reading and make a motion to approve it tonight. But I'm questioning, this underlying section starts with a quotation mark with a subsection A, goes on to the end, ends the quotation mark and says, "To existing BP 1312.3." I want to -- are the quotation marks necessary? Is the A necessary? And is that last little wording necessary between the ED code?
No.
So I'd make the motion to approve and waive the first reading and approve Exhibit Board Policy and Exhibit 1312.3 with those technical changes.
So you're striking the phrase "to the existing"?
Yeah, that's not...
That part, okay.
But including the ED code reference?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'll second your motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That actually brings us back. Well, I'll tell you what we can do. We can return to item D10 and take up that item and...
Take a break.
As we wait. We're so unaccustomed to being early. Okay, so item D10?
And I pulled that one. And I pulled it, it's the Acceptance of Completed Contract for the Outdoor Classroom Project at Adams Elementary School. Not because I question the spending on this and that the fact that the contract is completed, but as a reflection, sort of lessons, what we've learned about this, and also what the plan is to move forward with this particular project. This was $65,000. There was different leadership in child development at the time, and they envisioned a big outdoor classroom project and had plans made. And then, not only were the plans too expensive for what they had, but the amount that they had was also cut. But what also is going on at that school is that there is an existing preschool kindergarten play structure that is 15 to 20 years old. It's not ADA compliant. I believe the district had to get waivers for it to continue. And so that was sort of left there, an older structure. And what the school has ended up with instead is a new fencing, or what you can see, what the children are enjoying, is new fences and a half of a trike path, but no trikes, and no place to store trikes if they were able to buy them, which they can't. And so I look at that and think, wow, for $65,000, they could have replaced the play structure and had something usable for the kids instead. And I just feel like it was a -- it ended up being sort of good money thrown after bad, in a sense. Once that was, that we started down that road, we should have reflected and stopped. But also, you know, here's my question, you know, what's next?
The play structure is scheduled to be replaced with Measure R 2010 bond funds. We're going through, starting with those that were identified by the Logan Hopper report first. We've completed the one at Monroe. We also have one to upgrade at Cleveland, McKinley, Franklin, and Adams. The good news is that a lot of the $65,000 went for infrastructure underneath. It doesn't have to be repeated if funds are found available to do the next phase of this project, enlarging, you know, more bike track areas, the underground drainage part, the electrical part, and some of the irrigation that had to be redone and rerouted is done now and doesn't need to be repeated the next time. Unfortunately, for this project, you had to do X amount of infrastructure before you could start placing things on top. And once you finished that infrastructure and started placing things on top, you didn't have enough money to go as far as we'd like to for the things on top. So a lot of the money that was in this project is underground and not seen, whereas the next phase of this project, if the funding can be found for it, would all be seen and above ground. So you would appear that your dollars would go twice as far.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just comment. I wasn't going to pull it, because it's -- you nicely forgot that they also spent $35,000 with the planning for this fence and the underground things. But total expenditure was $100,000, and it's a good-looking fence. And I'm sure underground is good-looking, too. But it strikes me as something that must be some lessons learned there on how to control, how you have $100,000 and end up with a project that's going to cost $265,000.
We've had discussions with Debbie Vajer on the projects that are coming down the line, because child development, the people that were in place did an excellent job every year of somehow grabbing a $100,000 grant when other districts weren't able to do that. And I don't know what the magic was that they put in their grant applications, but they were highly successful in getting that $100,000 every year. So kudos to that. But you're correct, we do need to tighten up our control over the excessive meetings and design time and design costs with unrealistic expectations of what can be accomplished with the amount of funds available.
Well, oh, sorry. I was just going to say, so are we doing that? I guess what I felt was implied in the two comments of my colleagues was, what are we doing different, or what have we put into place to make sure that that's not going to continue to happen?
Clear expectations of what funds available will provide versus what the user envisions as a total project from the beginning, and keeping a tighter control on not allowing meetings to take place where billable time is taking place between architects and consultants that need to be paid for that time. Being more assertive from our end.
Okay. Ms. Parker, did you have a final comment?
No, I'm just, I'll make the motion whenever we're ready to, but I'm glad to hear...
Ms. Lamone, did you have a comment?
And my question actually is, so what does happen next, besides the protocol piece that we're changing? I mean, does Adams stay with a fence and a great underground, or...
Well, hopefully, we can find a funding source to continue with the enlargement of the bike path, other amenities which they, which were originally in the project as bid that we had to reduce by the $100,000. I don't know how soon it is before they can go back for another $100,000 grant for the same site. That's one thing that could be considered.
Well, if I could just follow up on that. What I would like to see, I guess, is equipment for the students. So when I hear, and maybe it has to go this way, and I just don't know that, but when I hear additional funding for enlargement of the bike path, I'd rather have the bikes for the students before we do the additional funding for the bike path, because there is playground area on which they could use those while it's being expanded. So I guess I would rather see the equipment be the first priority, and then additional development be maybe a secondary priority. But you have a better grasp of this. Would that work, or is there, are there reasons why that is, why it has to be the other way around?
No, it'd be basically a different funding source for the equipment that would go on than the actual construction of the infrastructure itself. But we could work with child development in trying to identify funding sources and grants for both. That's not a problem.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Ms. Deegan?
Can I just quickly say, there's an organization in town called Kids on Bikes that every year puts together, assembles, like 300 or 400 bicycles that they give to the Unity Shop. And I know they're looking at changing their model of how they distribute those, but I suspect, and they've done tricycles, they've done bikes for older kids, I suspect that would be a terrific source. So I'll make sure you can get that information to you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And with that, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve D10. They completed contract for the outdoor classroom project at Adams Elementary School.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five zero. Okay, so we have only our time certain item basically left on the agenda, other than coming events and future agenda items, which I think will be reasonably quick. So...
I do have a future agenda item I might just toss out real quick.
Okay.
It's simple. Based upon the earlier motion, where we eliminated the November 5 meeting, and looking at the calendar next year, one of the four months that has five Tuesdays is a July 31, which is typically dark. I'm not personally convinced that we need to automatically schedule the fifth Tuesday as a regular meeting. And so I'd like to propose coming agenda discussion on changing, instead of the second, fourth, and fifth Tuesday, just second and fourth, you know, having two regular meetings a month, the second and fourth. So I'd like to see that on the agenda for discussion. And I, this is a sample of what the wording would look like.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure any board, any of the other board members were on the board before we moved to the fifth.
I was observing, but we can't really talk about it right now.
So that was our previous practice. Okay, so we can add that to an agenda item. Any other future agenda items since we are taking that one up? No, again, I think we have quite a list. Coming events, we are aware of the board workshop this Friday from 9 until who knows when. We have, we have sort of found, I didn't, actually, I didn't look at our agenda, so that was on our desk today.
Three o'clock, a little after three.
Is it after 3? Okay, so 9 to 3. So that will be coming up on Friday, and our next regular board meeting will be September 13. So with that, since we do have a time certain, I think we'll just take a five-minute, six-minute break and come back at 7:30.